I read, and I didn't know this, but the American flag's always supposed to be the east.
Yeah, I think that is right.
They don't know which way. True. I know, but I think about it the two times we've been in here, why don't I just flip off there? Okay, it is April thirteenth, two thousand twenty. We're gonna call this meeting to order pro-call. Ham.
Here.
Smile.
Here.
And Murphy, here. Number four, approval of warrants and claims.
I'll move, we approve those.
I'll second.
On favor, aye. Approval of the minutes of last meeting, March thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Any additions or corrections that everybody's seen?
I haven't, no.
They look good to me. I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the following road crossing permits for AEC. The fucking utility line?
That's for us in South State line. Or is that on YouTube?
I don't know.
It's D thirty's, yeah.
Union Water Wells, it's gonna be down there. Shackley, down in there, Apache Road, it looks like. I can give a section number. You want a section number? I can't read it.
Section four.
I'm getting old.
Section. Sorry, I wrote it on the front.
It's east of Alene, in section four. Southwest, southeast, section four, township twenty-two, range thirteen.
Are you good with it?
Yeah, yeah, it's overhead.
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven. Approved, disapproved monthly reports from the following: assessor, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer, treasurer, election board in chair.
I'm all.
Here.
I'll move, we do so.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So is she overnitting now, your mom?
No, she's here. It won't be one, it won't be where they have to do surgery.
Soft cast.
Yeah, I think it'd just be a cast.
I'm just getting that away from her, so I'll put rather.
I see where the new deal is, Seltzer or tonic water and zinc.
Supposed to kill this stuff?
They're supposed to take care of this stuff.
Won't agree with you, huh? Twelve-foot distance.
Yeah, you gotta get Schweppes tonic water and zinc.
Well, the zinc has been part of the deal that they recommend, but.
Well, that's what happened.
Good luck trying to buy it.
Yeah. Get some toilet paper while you're at it, right?
Yeah.
I don't notice they keep a lot of that zinc on the shelf anyway by itself, but when I went and got my eyes checked right when this thing started, that eye doctor told Paul and I that the vitamin C and zinc both were. Were bad. Good things to be taken.
This must be David's news.
Manning's news reports. I don't think I've seen one like that before.
What's the affidavit order?
It's the same thing as this. Well, yeah, it's somebody, when you sign an affidavit, it's that you're essentially the same thing as giving it. Some type of testimony or something under oath that you, you're signing affidavit saying it's the true.
True statement?
Yeah. Okay, we'll just move on to number eight, discussion of possible action regarding monthly appropriations. Guess we better approve those so we're back to paying the bills. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor? Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution, a proposition for the ballot question. Retail sale of alcoholic beverages and the sale of, by the individual drink for on-premises consumption during each day. Okay, John, I gave you a copy of that.
Yeah.
One. It is just a resolution that we're going to put, put it on the ballot for. And Marion, I. I guess Shelley made copies of this, as far as I'm concerned. If you wanna put it in paper, you can take these and put it as is when, if we decide to approve it. The first one would be the resolution number nineteen twenty eighty-five, and that's where we are voting to put it on the ballot.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
So move.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
There you go. I guess we'll leave that one for Marion. Number ten, discussion of possible action regarding the election proclamation and notice for the ballot question noted in agenda item nine. And that is actually what it says, the proposition is. Shall the retail sale of alcoholic beverages and by the individual drink for on-premises consumption during each day be approved within Woods County, Oklahoma, according to the laws of the state of Oklahoma? The ballot used as said elections shall set out, the proposition is above, set forth, followed by the following words. Shall the proposition be approved? Yes. And against? No. So I make a motion that that's how the proposition reads.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
He made the last one, did he?
Do what?
He made the motion on the last one, did he?
On that one he just said?
Yeah, yeah.
And the one before that? No?
John did, David seconded.
Okay, thanks. I was looking in my papers and like, John, thank you. Keep me straight here.
Number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution to surplus of John Kataboshi laptop ID number two fifteen dash eight for the election board. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Guard that. On favor?
Pop here?
A laptop.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
I agree. Motion carries.
Okay, number twelve, discussion of possible action regarding the use of the fairgrounds as a polling place for the election board. What this is, is for one thing, the homestead, they're gonna, they vote out there. That's for sure one place that, that they can't allow it. So, and I guess she told me as of Friday, I think, that Thursday, that they, they can't still vote in the vote tent.
Oh, no.
So, but anyway, the, whatever she needed out there at the fairgrounds, I told her that I was certain I was good with it, that they use the women's building or the merchants' building or both to, for the election to go on. I think it'd be a good place to sanitize it and maybe better than some other places, but she's not sure what, who all or what all, but I said whatever we need to do to help her accommodate it. So I get, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You second? Favor. You second?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is, she. Everybody's still kinda up in there, like at the city downtown here at the city and stuff.
Right.
They aren't sure about that. And I said, well, whatever. And she's, I mentioned, I talked to the interim city manager, and she said she didn't know about the rec park. But Sandra said she had to submit, submit that letter and that request already, and it was too late. If they did wanna change to the rec park from down here, they couldn't. But they'd be able to go to the fairgrounds if they wanted, so. Okay, number thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution for disposing of two thousand and eight Chevy pickup ID number three oh one dash one three oh. John Stein purchased it for fifty nine hundred and eighty dollars. A two thousand and seven Chevy pickup ID number three oh one dash one three five. Bob Vanstiver, is that right, John?
Sure.
Purchased it for. For thirty two hundred and twenty dollars. And a nineteen sixty-four Chevy, C sixty, ID number three oh two dash one two two. J R Rupp purchased it at the CD auction for five hundred and fifty-two dollars, all for district three.
Yeah, all those were.
Those are ones he'd surplused earlier. You good with it, John?
I'll make a motion now, or whatever I need to do there. I'm good with that.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding the opening of bids for skid unit and light package for Freedom Fire Department bid number nineteen twenty dash eighteen. And this will be, this is the first one in that group that we're getting a new one, and they're gonna sell the existing one with a year's warranty left on it. And so we'll have to, but they're gonna get the new one built, and these are bids for that. The pickup's been sent out here.
This one's open from J and J Custom Fire.
Is that from, sis?
J and J Custom Fire out of Pawnee.
Is that from both?
Yeah, that's what, they actually sent three bids. That's what I was trying to figure out, what they bid separate.
Okay.
What they do, the, uh, the bed and the skid unit, what else?
Keeler, Keeler's, the bed is under the fifteen thousand, so we don't have to bid it. He's bidding a skid unit and a light package.
And what, yeah.
Light barn.
Where's the option A B and C?
Two are for those skid units.
I'll get a B.
This is for your electrical, that's what.
Thank you.
So let me make sure.
What'd you say, Wes?
Two of them must be options for skid unit with pump plate, and then one's the electrical, so let me make sure they're valid, and then we'll give them to you. These are one of your options. The first option for the skid unit and pump plate was seventeen thousand five hundred. What?
Seventeen thousand five hundred.
And that's for what?
For the skid unit and pump plate from J and J, but they also give you another option for the skid unit and pump plate for fourteen five.
Probably a smaller pump or something down there.
Or tank or something.
Three thousand dollars difference.
Yeah.
Does that say one with the Kohler engine?
This is a Hill, uh, SPX two hundred, eighteen horsepower bruce. What's it say down there?
This is a twenty horsepower Kohler engine.
Yeah, there is a difference.
Is it the more expensive or cheaper one?
This one, the Kohler's the cheaper one. That's one of them.
Really?
And that's like twenty horsepower?
Yes.
What was the first one? Eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen bruce.
Yeah.
Which is typical of what we got on every run. I don't know about any more used to, the Kohler was.
Oh, yeah.
Way the best, but I think they're cheaper.
But I wouldn't think it would be cheaper.
There's nothing else some of them got.
It needs to be three clock.
I just saw that.
That's why, that's why I asked.
Yeah, cuz that's. I'm busy. I'm in, I'm, I'm in a meeting, call me back in an hour, so. See ya.
I think if we let Jennifer open those, to be sure they're legit bids, and Ethan can take them and look at the specs and come back before the meeting's over, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, we probably.
Let, let him go over and see. Well, he was kinda wanting to get it done, so.
They're gonna, the bed should be finished by, by the next day or so, that painter announced, so they said they should have it by the end of the week, and they're wanting to try and get it settled in by Tuesday of next week.
And we are gonna probably meet next week, so.
Right.
So if we can let him look at it and decipher, which is, I mean, we can look at them later, once he's went through them. We'll just, uh, see. One of these, I think, is because there was a.
I'd say this is that, that one. The J and J.
Nope, just the top one, I think. Isn't that right?
J and J have an electrical package that they bid separate to, and it was for seventy five hundred dollars. And then I.
Who was that?
J and J, yeah.
And it was for forty, seventy five hundred for the electrical.
I'm taking that that'd be the lights.
Mm-hmm. And then I just opened Chief Fire and Safety, and their total for all of it is twenty seven thousand, seven thirty-five.
Twenty seven, seven thirty-five?
Yes.
For everything?
Twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yes.
Couple thousand dollars difference in the highest priced ones on J and J compared to Chief, Chief's higher still. Need to look over the specs and see that, what's, compare apples to apples of the game, so.
Is that warranty company?
No.
No, we've got another one.
Oh, okay.
Last one.
This one's not.
Who's this from?
We said to have all stainless steel plumbing, this one has galvanized plumbing.
Well, that's probably a little difference in the cost of it right there. Go ahead, Jennifer, sorry.
No, this one's from Cooper Creek out of Loyal, Oklahoma, and they are bidding twenty two thousand, eight fifty.
Is that their total?
Yes.
Now, what was the name of that company?
Cooper Creek.
You ever heard of them, Joe?
Yeah, yeah. I hadn't heard of that J and J, but Cooper Creek.
Been a lot of bear trucks.
J and J does?
Two and a half ton, five ton trucks.
So you know any history on Cooper Creek?
Yeah, they do good stuff. I mean, it's, it's just kinda like Chief Fire, I mean, it's all kind of good stuff.
Well, I mean, they're considerably cheaper than either one of the other two, is what I was, but that's why Ethan needs to look at the specs.
Study all that.
The only, I mean, not that it's the only thing, but these beds are built to certain dimensions too, I mean, if they, they have to stay in that dimension.
But you respect that, so, yeah.
Is this, uh, we're getting the bed built somewhere else, right?
Well, so Keeler's who were buying from over Palm City, and they do, are doing them in the past. The company that was actually building them for them was Butler, and they sold out to Dewey's, which is Harper Industries. So they've gone in and we've given them all the specs, all the measurements, everything, and they've gone in and redesigned this bed, and they're gonna have it as a set bed, because all the beds in the past have ended up being a one-off bed. So hopefully down the road, the next one, build us one of those beds. If there's none of this measurement, no difference, it's.
Yeah, same thing.
One-stop shop.
Yeah, that's what we've been hunting for, and they've been doing it as a.
What would they build the bed for? They, they bid it out, is that a bid out deal or?
It's under, they typically with, um, the bumper replacement, the toolbox, and the bed has been about five. Little under that. The bed about thirty-seven, thirty-eight is what they've done. And when they switched companies with this, he told them, he said, we can't go up on prices, you know, he said, I'm doing this for the fire departments, I'm not trying to make money off them, so we need to keep them down here at these prices to keep them what we're doing in the past, so.
It's been pretty sweet in the past, I mean.
He's been great with the deal.
About half, half the price of somebody else's beds, and so.
But we don't have to.
It's under fifteen, so.
Yeah, but when you throw all this stuff in there, doesn't it?
Well, they're, they're separate, you can't, you can't have us, I mean, you know, you gotta have a bed on the truck, so they're kind of separate, and that's what.
And when we originally looked at doing it as a turnkey, it was the prices we got, what, two years ago?
Or actually not.
On the first one, we saved almost twenty thousand dollars by going.
Breaking it down.
One extra stop of bed and all that, so.
They all look legal?
Mm-hmm, they're all legal. You said you don't want us to.
All right, we'll let Ethan look over that, and we'll move on. To number fifteen, we'll come back to fourteen after he's had a chance to go over those bids. And fifteen is discussion of possible action regarding changing the date from June sixth to August eighth for the Ness Katona Arts Festival.
So move.
Second.
Has people been inquiring about that?
Uh, on favor?
About the news lately? About this art festival stuff? I've been hoping they'd change the date, or ain't been really any complaints or any of that.
Well, it's moved.
Yeah, they wanted, they.
I think everybody knows, August may not even work.
Right, and then that's what they said, they said they were, you know, wanting to get closer.
I'm not stealing this one's envelope.
One less free word up.
Any new business?
I'm still, uh. Going at it with the windmill people, but I'm making real progress, I think, so I'm gonna keep after them.
Good.
Are we, uh. We still falling, kinda looking down at what I'm doing, and keep shutting, until at least the first of May, and go from there and see.
I think so. I mean, that's.
I'm not good with that, I just.
I don't think we've got any choice.
Well, I don't feel like we need to.
I will bring up something that is very important, if you talk to people, and I don't know if we should run an ad or what.
Get our census done.
The census deal, I mean, because they can't go door to door.
Right.
What about that guy we hired, Doug?
Well, I haven't heard from him.
Anymore?
Ethan, I, I haven't, I, I talked to him once, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and we didn't really visit a lot about where it was, we're all in this mess, and, but I do know, I read a deal where, and I don't think it was just pertaining to Woods County, where only forty-seven percent of the people have responded. I know on the radio is what made me really think about this, is Harper County and Beaver County, they've had less than eleven percent respond.
Cape and Pogetts and something.
So we need to just, I didn't, it's just a reminder for people that it doesn't take long to fill it out, and they need to, it's for everybody's advantage to, to get a good camp. So we need to just, I didn't, it's just a reminder for people that it doesn't take long to fill it out, and they need to, it's for everybody's advantage to, to get a good camp.
Yeah, if I can do it, anybody can do it.
It doesn't take long, it's pretty simple to do, so.
Sometimes people have the hardest things with the simplest.
And, and it is, and, and I know I've trashed them before, but it is a constitutional deal that you're supposed to, I mean, it.
Yes.
You're, you're supposed to do it.
Supposed to, yes.
Whether you think they're invading your privacy or not, that's.
Well, and really, the questions are so simple, I mean, they're, I mean, it's, it's, I didn't feel invaded.
Anyway, number seventeen, approved this, approved blanket purchaser.
I'm moved, we approved this.
I'll second, on favor?
Aye, aye.
Have you had time Ethan, or are we hurrying you too much? There's a lot to go through on that.
Well, we've got, we can sit here and they can sign while you, we've just got time, but worry about that.
Let me see.
Well, I think we've already eliminated the J and J.
You're just kinda comparing them all.
From the aluminum piping and the galvanized. So I think, I think J and J's already been eliminated, eliminated because of the piping. Well, they've got two, I'm going through the whole other one, but they sent two specs for the skid. One of the skids has all galvanized, which we spec all stainless steel one, so that one. Oh, just that one, that, that's the only one they spec that they did that way.
Seventeen thousand, do you have your stacks there?
Yeah, I think so, here's.
Tank size isn't good, so.
Here's that glasses, I mean, that's, these are what we sent out for the specs.
Right here, all plumbing would be stainless steel piping, with stainless steel metallic fittings, plumbing shell includes stainless steel manifold discharge, all valves will be full port grass acron valves with T F, J and J.
That's one of them, but the other one that they sent was not, the two price options on the skid.
Just these, this, this is one right here.
That meets the specs. Which motor is it?
Total cost seventeen five, that's with the Hail two hundred with the V eighteen. That's that, that right there. And then this is another one?
That's her, that's electrical, this is the galvanized one, I'm gonna look at the galvanized, but do you have the rest of the paperwork for this one?
That's all he handed me, that's it.
Unless this is it.
That's it?
This is.
That's the rest of it. This is that gallon, I just want, you wanna work on?
Yeah, I'll look at it here in a second.
Have you signed these already?
No, no, never.
No, no, no.
I ain't gonna look at it if it's galvanized.
That was the one that's not, yeah.
Yeah, this is. Do you have something about lighting, or uh, corked up about, shaggy, or uh?
Yeah, I think he is decent.
See, he drew a pump.
He did?
That's where I saw him.
He filed again?
Oh, but he didn't file.
He wasn't going to.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know that, I know.
Well, I just seen where somebody else had filed.
Shankster and opponent.
Huh?
Shankster and opponent.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, Rico, I think was gonna run, just Corks Foreman, but I don't.
That may be in huge run.
And I don't know if Rico's his real name.
I don't know.
They call him Rico, but.
Yeah.
Shankster and opponent, Democrat.
Who turned up? Anita did. One of the commissioners did though.
I did, I did.
Do I?
One of the commissioners announced that they drew a opponent.
Well, Stan, I heard wasn't gonna run again.
Well, I saw Nelson Francis running for primary commissioner.
Who?
Nelson Francis.
That's the only thing I can see is the difference.
I'll be here.
On, on these two.
Chad's brother, but they're gonna run for that.
Maybe your quality of your.
How they have it.
Well, just, you know, a wheeling's better than a, a fly-by-night, or, you know, they're, they're making up. I, I don't know, a Fenix Fusion Series super.
Their stuff's, their stuff's pretty good.
That, that Fenix?
That's what I, I'm on, what's on David's, have you heard he's loved them?
Wheel siren, I, that's, that's, that's all just about the same as that other, other than it's just cheap. You know, with your lights, that's, I didn't see any lights in that J and J.
It's right here, it's all stuff, they separate.
Does it say, uh, the kind though? I mean, that would be about the only thing I could see, you could compare it.
Yeah, these actually have all the stuff on it. And that was the thing why we put so much specs in this, because we don't want any gray area, just, this is what it is, no variance.
That just need light, that's a little pricey to me, that, that light package on there.
What, they do this?
Yeah, that's seventy-five on top of there. Whereas this is all one. And they're telling you your, their pump seventeen five, so that tells you the total of your lights, basically.
Did that Cripple Creek, did it meet the specs, Cooper?
Cooper Creek, whatever. Yeah, as far as I can tell, it had the, everything listed right, as far as the stainless steel. If you're a little different hose reel and valve thing, uh.
I don't know how their stuff is set up completely.
You missed one on that one.
Well, they're by far the cheapest, or they?
How much is their total?
Twenty-two five.
Oh, seventeen, twenty-two. They're, they're getting about five thousand for their light package, and they're about two grand cheaper. From what I can tell, their light package is a couple of grand cheaper, and that's what puts us below.
Okay, I mean, they're, they're using cheaper lights on them, the pump and motor.
Cause you put seventy-five hundred, that's uh.
Well, we didn't put branding to on the lights.
Seventeen five, and then seventy-five hundred, that's uh.
That's twenty-five something.
Yeah, that's twenty-six thousand for J and J, two twenty-seven seven, Cooper Creek's, you know.
Yeah, that's what.
They're four or five thousand dollars cheaper.
Gotta think if you wire, if you wire them up, you might have to replace the light, but I think you could replace a light or two for that.
Definitely. They buy a light bar for a grand. Probably a good two grand to have somebody wire it up.
If they do reputable work, it doesn't mean brand, I mean, one could be as.
Business a lot.
One could be as good as the others, they just use a different brand, it's cheaper, and so.
They were one of the ones that bid on uh, when we got them O eights, so they've been in business.
Yeah.
For quite a little while. What do you think Ethan?
Numbers speak a lot, I just, I'm not familiar with them, that's my only thing.
Yeah, but we haven't ever used J and J either.
Right. The only thing, and, I mean, I know Chief's hired, a little bit higher than that, but I know we know what we're expecting out of that, we've had a good look with them in the past. We've worked through them with specs and exactly. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not denying that, but there's, that's quite a little difference there.
Yeah, I don't see.
Five thousand dollars difference to Chief and them.
I don't have a problem letting somebody.
If, if they've been in business for a while, I mean, I, I guess I can kinda appreciate the fact that they've, they're trying to get the bid.
Yeah.
If, we think their stuff is gonna be functional, is what I'm getting at, and. And I don't know if there was any big issue with those O eights, the skid unit, was there a on?
No, we didn't get it from them, but.
Oh, we didn't?
No, them come from uh, Boulogne, uh, Bartles.
But they, you knew, they were in business at that time?
Yeah, they bid on uh, some stuff at the same time, one of them outbid that we.
But as far as functional, if they, I mean, okay, I guess.
It's like out of, well, we're nearby, Crescent or somewhere like that.
Where?
Oil?
Lo.
Oil?
Straight west, it's west of Kingfisher, Weston, between there and Ames, I think.
Not Lowell.
Yeah. It, that, you know that Votec that's between Hennessy and Kingfisher? I think Lowell's back north of it.
What do you think? I, I'm willing to give it a shot, but. That's just my opinion.
Well, we're gonna end up doing six of them, if it works out, if they're five thousand dollars cheaper on each one, that buys a whole unit.
Unit, yeah.
Well, this is the third, I mean, this is the third truck. What about a warranty? Skid has one year warranty, uh, pump has two year warranty, plumbing has ten year, and the tank has a lifetime.
Ain't gonna get much better.
That's, that's typically the common.
Cross the board kind of, yeah.
Based on manufacturer. Chief also has a five year warranty on the electrical side, but there's no warranty on this.
Well, like you said, if it's been any different other time, it might be. We're gonna have to start sharpening our pencil and spinning wisely, so I make a motion, we do the Cooper Creek.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye. Hopefully it'll work out. If not, we'll learn a lesson.
Well, it sounds like the warranty on the skids, if it's the light deal, we'll, we may have to spec it closer next time.
Too bad they rate somebody that does do light. You know, and still going to the fire, like Chief Fire, hey, spec us some lights, if we could go Bob down the road and we do the same stuff, or.
And all that stuff. They can use different brand stuff, right? I'm just checking. If you didn't spec a brand, they can.
Yeah. If you just like a light bar and halogen lines.
Okay, nevermind, I'm sorry, we haven't listed yet, anything brand name should be equivalent. Okay, we got a motion, need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make them, oh, you, you made it, I'll, I'll second it.
All in favor, we're done, aye.
Aye.